Let's call it the order.
Well, we don't have an hour to have your backs.
We're gonna call a work session. January 24th, the order. And the next agenda on the item on the agenda is citizen comments for items that are not on this agenda. And I see no one getting up, so we'll move on to number three and number four. Were there any questions about those two?
Number four.
Okay. Any questions on three? Okay, we'll go to number four. Consideration of event permit request from the Pediatric Brain Tumor Foundation for Ride for Kids Event to be held at Jim Warren Park, May 20th.
I was just looking through this. I don't see anything that would, that relates back to the city of Franklin. I don't see much of any relate back to Williamson County. And I have a concern that we are being asked to approve a route that we have very little jurisdiction on. And I'm also concerned about the amount of times that we shut down the streets of Franklin, inconveniencing the citizens of Franklin and Williamson County for an organization whose location appears to be in Asheville, North Carolina, or Atlanta, Georgia. I'm not sure which. And is it a 501(c)(3) or is it a 501(a)? It says that you're exempt status under section 501(a) of the Internal Revenue Code described in the still in effect, based on the information you submitted. Now, this letter's 1996.
Here comes Monique.
Monique chairs our special events team, so maybe she can know.
Yeah. It is gonna be in the park. And then the route, part of it, or most of it is in the county, but they're asking for our police officers to help out at the intersections in the city. They do have a local office, our local Middle Tennessee chapter. And actually, the representative couldn't be here today, but they do have a local chapter.
This is the fourth year, Alderman, that they have done this, and they also do work with Williamson County's Sheriff's Office to assist with it, with the assistance on the roads outside the city limits. So they try to coordinate between the two agencies.
Well, they're more than the county. The county sheriff, they're going into, are they going into, yeah, they're going into Murray County?
But for our jurisdiction, we're only concerned with Williamson County. Now, they may go into two other counties, but...
We know that they have to be in touch with those jurisdictions.
Yes.
Well, I don't, you know, at some point in time, we've got to go back and look at the amount of times we shut down the streets of Franklin for this out of Jim Warren Park, or whether it's off of five points, or whether it's off the square, or wherever it is. And I just, I just, I know, I know when I get out on Saturday morning and try to go someplace, because I think I went through this last year. Well, I had to go through it, because I couldn't go through it.
This is a little different in that they just close intersections as the cyclists are going through, or the bikes are going through. So it's not like a complete closure, like an event would be. So it's a little bit better, but I understand what you're saying.
And it's on Sunday?
Yes.
And it's from 10:00. Actually, the rides leave at 10:00, and they get back at 11:15.
They're at the Jim Warren Park between 7:00 and 9:00.
Yeah, right.
But they do exit the park at 10:00, and then...
And then come back.
But we're not, we're not stopping in traffic, in the fact that when you're stopping it intermittently.
Right.
So, it's fine.
Any other comments? Thanks for pointing out. Alderman, thanks for everybody coming up. Number five, consideration agreement with Pictometry International. City of Franklin Contract 211-0191, and the total amount of $70,977.60 to acquire light detection and ranging data.
Hey Fred? This is an important upgrade to our GIS system.
That's the ranging data guy.
And really, the underpinnings of the map.
Basically, that's what we're doing. Our, part of our data has not been updated since 2005 and the other 2009, but this is an update to our GIS system. We're also doing this in conjunction with Brentwood, so that will, it brought the cost down. We were gonna do it with the county, but they backed out, so it would've been even cheaper if the county had joined us. They're, this is really nothing new, it's just an update to what we, what we do. It's been a while since we've updated it.
Is this company, or the company we've worked with before?
Yes.
And we will not be receiving this data unless, of course, the pavement is not due into the data. End of the year, is that what you anticipate, the fourth quarter?
What they do, they have to do a fly with leaves off.
Okay.
And so, once the contract is signed, we need to get that to them quickly. Brentwood signed theirs, I think, two weeks ago. They'll give us a date when they can fly, and of course, they can't fly with rain, or fog, or anything like that, it's gotta be clear. So once they complete their fly, then we will get the first, probably the first cut of data in June, July time. Then we certify that it's, meets our specs, and then, and then we pay. So it's split into two years.
Let me know when they're gonna fly up, someone on my roof.
Yeah.
We don't know when they fly, unfortunately.
Is that 70,000 within our budget?
Seventy-five was posted for this one.
We did budget this specifically.
You're up, below, or at, right at it?
A little below budget. We had anticipated this just because of the, the need to refresh the information from time to time.
Yeah, so we're a little bit below it. Good, okay. Thank you.
And we did put this on both agendas to try to expedite getting it in place, so that we could get the fly done at the appropriate time.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on. Number six, consideration of bid award Chevrolet of Murph Spur, and a total amount of $30,754 for one four-door sport utility vehicle for the fire department. Any questions?
Yeah, while I hear you. That is second to the highest bid, is it not?
That's correct. We did not recommend the lowest bid in this particular situation.
Or the next lowest bid. Or the next lowest bid.
Right. Each vendor took exceptions to the specifications that we wrote for this particular vehicle. We graciously granted a opportunity for each vendor to submit portions of that bid that they could not meet, and none of the vendors that bid on this process agreed to do anything like that, so...
Brian?
Yeah, we, we offer as a standard part of our bid process, an opportunity for the vendors to let us know if there are any specifications to which they think they would need to take exception, so that we can ask ourselves, once they identify those, whether we would be willing to adjust those specifications. It might be something that's, that we had in from a previous design that had gotten changed in the, in the changeover from one model year to the next, and we hadn't gotten that updated in our spec, or otherwise might be something that's not terribly important to the city. But the opportunity for making that request is a week prior to the bid submittal deadline, not after the bid submittal deadline. So, as the chief pointed out, all four bids did not meet specs exactly, and so the bid that we're recommending is the bid that comes closest. Unfortunately, it's not the low, it is close.
It's the fewest number of exceptions, essentially.
Correct. That's right. We, our practice, our standard practice is to look first at how closely a bid comes to meeting our specifications. Ideally, all bids that we receive all meet our specifications, and then we look at price. But in the case of a, of a bid where none of the bids meet specifications, we look first at how closely they come.
Well, the Ford bid is two grand under this Chevrolet bid. Oh, give or take.
But the other ones are only like 100, 200 max difference, so they're all relatively very close. The lowest bid that we have here, you felt it didn't come even close enough to the specs that you would be comfortable with, and that?
Correct. Yeah, we, we don't afford ourselves the luxury of being judgmental about which specifications are important and which are not. We take the approach that if we said that this is what we want, then we, we don't know how the vendor could read our mind to know which ones we really mean, and which ones aren't that important to us. So we treat all the specifications as equally important, and if they make it, great. If they can't meet that specification, what they really ought to do is let us know, as I said, a week prior to the bid submittal deadline, or earlier, so that we can have an opportunity to reconsider on that. But in this case, as the chief points out, none of them made that request, so we're left dealing with bids that don't quite meet specifications.
And I might add that this is the second time we've gone out for a bid, so which has delayed us in replacing a vehicle to begin with. And it, it's quite simple, if we specify that it should have a chrome front bumper, and nobody can meet that in their specs, we understand that. So everyone takes exception with that issue. It's just the other issues of whether it's some type of leather or vinyl seats compared to a fabric type of seat, and so the pricing can be a little bit skewed from that perspective.
Or tires or rims.
Tires or rims are another area.
Number seven, consideration resolution 2012-10, a resolution authorizing the city administrator to execute any grant agreements for the Hazard Mitigation Grants Program.
This is really a follow-up to the application process we've been through, and we got notice about a month or so ago of the approval of the funding for Phase 1 of the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. When we look back at the authority granted, we really just granted the approval to submit the application. We did not grant from the board the authority to accept. So we drafted this resolution to, to grant the authority for me, as city administrator, to go ahead and execute the grant agreement. We also included authority for Phase 2, should that Phase 2 funding come along here as well, so that we can expedite the execution of the grant agreements and keep this project moving.
At what point do you think we'll be able to give the money to the people who've lost their homes?
What we'll need to do is, we'll need to go through the, executing this grant agreement, and then we'll need to have an appraisal conducted. If the property owner agrees with that appraisal, then we could move into setting a closing date, at which time the city would front the money for the purchase of the property, and would submit for reimbursement from TEMA, Tennessee Emergency Management, through Federal Emergency Management. So that's, that process may take what several, a few months for us to get through both, an appraisal, then it's up to the, the property owner if they're in agreement with that appraisal. If they wanna submit or other information, or challenge that, then they have rights to do that. We can go through that, then we'll set up a closing date, and at that point, we could pay them, city, from city funds, and then get the reimbursement back from the federal government. And that reimbursement, we would expect, will take us about a year to get from the federal government.
But we can go on and give them there.
But we can go ahead and pay them with this agreement in place, and with the understanding that the, you know, we've reached an agreement on the appraisal as well.
All right, that the step right before the appraisal that you said, what's that?
Execute this grant agreement. When you give me this authority, I can execute the grant agreement.
And how long does that take?
It'll take, happen tomorrow morning, if you approve it tonight. So we'll, we'll do it tomorrow, it'll move forward from there, we'll set up the appraisals. We, you know, we have the good ability to get that in place, then it'll be up to the property owner, if they're in agreement with that appraisal. And then, so that, that's sort of a, you know, a variable in this process, and then from there, we can set the closing date.
Do you have to have more than one appraisal?
We don't have to. If, if there's an agreement, we can move forward with that, an appraisal. But if they, if they challenge, then we get into multiple appraisals and making a determination from there.
I have a guess.
I do, too.
We shall see.
I think you're gonna have to have more than one appraisal.
We have had appraisals that have not favored us, that we've paid for.
Yeah, that's happened.
Yeah, and that didn't stop anyone from asking for more.
Something multiple times.
But this is, this is wonderful that we're at this place, at least, and hope that it, it does continue expeditiously.
We will move it as, as best we can from this point on, too.
Let me ask just one final question. The properties that we're looking at, they have all received some FEMA money, haven't they?
Yeah, they, they have all received a benefit in terms of the original response, disaster response.
So it's not as if, over two years ago...
I believe they all have.
They're sitting in a, there's a house somewhere, place sitting, that has not had any FEMA money passed along to the owner?
I, I believe all these would've received some sort of benefit along the way. But they would've been eligible to submit for, you know, assistance.
Number eight, discussion of the building and street standards, Board of Appeals.
This really is an issue Alderman Peterson brought up, so I'll kind of let her take a lead in, in describing the concern. I did ask staff to review and give some consideration to how we might look at this, and I think in particular, what the question is about is how we deal with specifically appeals that relate to our implementation of street standard determinations. And just to refresh everybody's memory on this, a year or so ago, we formed sort of an overall appeals board to deal with building, trade-related code enforcement, or code determinations that we make, and we also included street standards in that group. And we had previously multiple different specialized groups, and those weren't well-populated, they weren't frequently used, and so we really didn't have a very effective body. So we decided to go ahead and merge that into sort of a super appeals committee, if you will, and, and put that in place, so that it would be one that we could keep well-populated with, with professionals, and it serves as an appeals body when our staff makes a determination about certain specific technical standards that are in our, in our building codes, or in our street standards, and then gives this body a chance to review that, did we appropriately interpret those technical standards, or apply them appropriately, in whatever determination we made related to one of the, one of these areas. So, but I think Alderman Peterson's main concern is around street standards, and how, and is this the appropriate avenue to use that? I will say that, in, since the creation of this commit, this group, this appeals board, we have heard two appeals, one related to a building code issue, one related to a, a street-related issue, it's actually a, an access issue to private property. So those have been the two areas that we've used it in the last year or so. We'd be glad to talk about it a little more, and, and give you some more feedback on, on where we got in our review of it, but I'll let the Alderman speak to it first.
Thank you very much, and I, I thought that the information that was given to us was very good. It appeared only to talk about traffic signals, though, so I wondered, at some later time, we might talk about what would be a decision of, you know, where the street standard, of the, of what specific street standards would, would be heard by this. But, but let me give you the, the reason that I have a concern about this. There's a project that's come up in the last few months, where there was discussion about a, a traffic signal being requested, or discussed, in the request for a, a traffic signal at a location that has heavy traffic. And whenever, you know, we were told that the Building and Street Standards Board of Appeals would, would look at this after our staff has reviewed it and made a decision about it, I became concerned because, you know, we were talking about, this was kind of a super appeals board, where there had maybe been an appeal for plumbing, a plumbing decision, you know, a decision made by a plumbing inspector, or decision made by electrical inspector, or something like that. To, what stood out to me immediately was that, in the case of someone who is appealing a decision from our Building and Neighborhood Services about a plumbing issue, that will probably only have an effect on the particular project. The same thing is true about electrical, you know, even fire codes, that would really only affect the project itself, you know, if there is an appeal from our regular staff on this. However, an appeal on a traffic situation like a traffic light, it would not only affect the project itself, but it would very often affect the greater community. In other words, it would have, for instance, if there's a, a traffic signal place, someplace, where there's a lot of other traffic, then it would affect many, many people besides just the people that are entering the project themselves. And so, I wondered at that point if street standards are something that should be included in a committee, and, and very honestly, I know several of these people, and think very highly of them, but it's, it's also true that this seems to me, that this would be something that would really, a decision would need to be made by our staff. As has been stated in here, our staff certainly looks at, at many things whenever they're making a technical decision about streets. And to me, they probably are the, these, these people who know the most about this. And as I say, nothing against any of the people that are on this board, but to give an example, I don't know that a plumber would know a lot about making a decision on, on traffic, you know, on traffic. And in fact, there's some other engineers here, also whom I happen to know, but unless you're, you know, unless your specialty is traffic, then you might or might not be the appropriate person to hear this, the appeal. So, as I say, the difference to me is that an appeal of many of the other things that may come up, you know, would only affect the specific project, whereas an appeal of some of our decisions of our staff on traffic could have a great effect on the larger community there.
So what do you think needs to be done?
Well, at first, I would, you know, one of the comments here is that they would need to have the people, people that, that know about this, to be sure to be at the meeting.
That last paragraph.
But, but, let me say to you, I mean, who, who are the people, I see there's one person here who is named as a civil engineer traffic, I mean, wait, I'm sorry, I have the list of the people who are on the, on the committee at the present time. And there's one person there that is noted as a civil engineer parentheses, traffic. The other people go from, you know, there's some other engineers on here, but there's an architect, landscape architect, electrical contractor, plumbing contractor, firefighter, and again, those people seem to me not to have the expertise that our staff would have.
Well, I understand, but what do you want done?
Well, I would like to remove from this committee the ability to hear appeals from our street standards. And that, because, as I say, I think our probably, our staff probably has more expertise, and a better, would be better to make the decision, period. And I'm not quite sure, to be honest with you, after looking at this, I know we have a Board of Zoning Appeals, you know, which, which approves variances, and, and I know that's probably established by state law. Is there a state law that, that requires building, building appeals?
Is there specific, I don't know if there's a specific...
A building, a, a technical Board of Appeals for building code-related, and yes, those are in the adopted codes that we...
No, I'm talking about, is the state has that? I tried to find it and couldn't find it, but then I wasn't.
No, there's no requirement for an appeals board for that kind of issue.
The streets, the street standards.
Well, the street standards, the reason we, we did it this way, that right now, the final decision is with our city engineer. He makes the final decision. So if someone wanted to appeal that, the only thing they could do is sue the city and our city engineer through a writ cert. So what we thought we would do is create a board that could hear this, an appeals board. So if this neutral body heard, heard the same, the same thing, hopefully, knowing that they're technical experts, if there's a problem at that point, that board gets sued as a, as a writ cert, and not our, our, a person, an individual.
It really provides an intermediate step before going to the court if somebody disagrees with how we've interpreted technical standards. And, and it's really to just provide that extra protective measure before somebody gets to, you know, filing against us, and also provides an additional oversight into what we do and how we interpret things.
Well, maybe I say one other thing. I was really surprised to see that this did not come before the planning commission. I mean, you know, because I would've thought that in previous times, that would've been a, a decision that would've been made by the planning commission as a part of the bigger... But that's not my concern.
It used to be. It used, the street standards, as I understand it, used to be part of the zoning ordinance. And when you revamped the zoning ordinance, the street standards were taken out. Now, that's, that's when we had, that's when it became solely a city engineer issue. That was my issue.
Well, maybe, maybe that's what, maybe that's what I'm asking, I have no idea.
You have to incorporate the street standards back into the zoning ordinance. That's, that's what we did.
Nobody told me that. Nobody told me that part of it. Maybe that's what I would want to do.
And we actually did see this question of, if you had a question on a, a track, a street standard interpretation, where did it go? It, it really didn't have anywhere else to go. And so that's why we folded this in as an aspect, because we thought, well, there's technical expertise of varying, varying categories, but technical expertise and folks that are used to looking at technical standards and how they're applied in a real-world situation. And, and, yeah, that was why we, we folded this in, because it gave an outlet to give at least some route of appeal beyond what, in this case, the city engineer would've said about what the, how, what the street standards mean, and how they're being applied in a specific situation, whether it's a street, a traffic signal, or a street access, or, you know, curb cut kind of question, which are the type of things we run into.
Well, maybe, I mean, as I say, I was not told this until tonight.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
So maybe my request would be that, then we would put this back in, in the zoning ordinance, and then it goes, you know, that would be another body. And actually, kind of, when you think about it, the planning commission does have a lot of expertise in talking about access and things like that, so maybe that would be an appropriate, you know, that might be an appropriate thing to look at, too.
That's an option for you?
Uh-huh.
I mean, I think, your, your question here is what appropriate body, and what...
Right.
Skills makes sense to provide that, that appeal route for folks? Because we didn't want to have no appeal route. And so, do you have better technical expertise with a specific traffic engineer and a group of other folks that are licensed professionals in some way or another, or whatever mix happens to be on the planning commission at a given time, who, yes, see certain elements of development and access, but may not possess the technical expertise either?
Well, one way, you just...
It's kind of the call that you make here, but I, I think there's a benefit to a, this technical body, is, is why I think we identified it, because there is some expertise and some understanding that could be helpful.
Can I say one thing? I mean, there's, I wouldn't want to, to do an appeal on a plumbing issue.
Right, right.
But on these others...
But I don't think, that, those kind of codes are...
Are different.
And they require, we adopted those international codes, and they do require...
They do require them.
Good, okay, so that, that...
But the street standards does not, does not...
Not, okay.
We folded it in because it needed a place to go. Go ahead, Bernard.
I think, and it's, it's a, it's a good discussion, but what we're, what I kind of advocate for is that our building codes, for example, are minimum standards. They're nationally recognized minimum standards. Our street standards are really nationally recognized street standards. We, we don't have standards that are really unique to Franklin. And the point is that if our development standards are predictable, that the appeals board should be used very rarely, if any time at all, which was really the reason why we combined all those different boards into one. And in those rare instances, where other design professionals, whether they're building, or architects, or engineers, or traffic engineers, have knowledge of a similar alternative that our, our professional staff maybe cannot justify, that you do have licensed certified professionals to weigh that, and you have people from each discipline represented. And again, I, I think the emphasis here is that if our development standards are applied as they're, as they're written, many of them minimum standards, or nationally recognized, then the board would be not used at all. then the board would be not used at all. And that's what the case here is in Franklin and a lot of other communities. But it is in those, can, those, it is available as an outlet for somebody that believes that there's a misinterpretation.
And I, I appreciate that. My, my question though is, now that you're telling me that those other, the appeals of those other standards are required by law to have, to have a board.
They're required when we adopted the international code.
Right. But the street standards are not. To me, that sets them apart. And so what is the comment to the fact that on the other standards, they really would only affect probably the individual project? Whereas something like this, which I must say, very honestly, we have an excellent set of professionals that we, that are our employees that makes decisions, that make decisions about this and, you know, but, but, but you see what I'm saying? That the, that the overturn of one of their, overturn of one of our employee decisions, our staff decisions, could have an effect on the entire community?
Can I, can I try?
But we can sue also.
Can I, can I try to respond to that a little bit?
Tell me this, how many times have we sued a developer?
But several cities have, have-
We've got a stop work orders down on many-
Sure, no, no, but, but let me, but go ahead.
And that's, that's a very, very good question. And what I, my response to that is that this board of appeals that we have of licensed professionals, or certified professionals, understand the framework and the theory behind those, those codes. And even though, when you talk about a fire code or some type of plumbing code perhaps, while it affects that finite structure, it does affect the people that use that structure. And when you, you know, you mentioned fire codes, for example, if they were not applied as intended, you're putting to effect the people that use that, the employees, and even, you know, our fire safety team that would respond to an emergency. And it's same way with plumbing. While the code-
But wait, but wait, come on, give me a break.
But you asked, you asked about who else does it affect? And, and granted, it is a finite, I, I can certainly concur, but there are people that use particularly these commercial buildings. And the other thing I would say is that the people that serve on that board of appeals are members and of our community that have volunteered their time to weigh these, these issues out.
Well, I would, now that, now that I understand that this, this is not required, whereas the others are, and that it could be, I'd, I'd like for us to maybe look at some information about putting this, now, what were you saying? Putting the street standards back by reference into the zoning ordinance?
Or, you know, let's-
I was gonna say, let's, let's talk about that.
I think the question is, do you want the planning commission to review it, or do you want this body to review it?
What body?
The, the technical standard board.
That's who I want to do it.
If you, if you like it the way it is, then it's, it's established the way it is. But if you, if you want to have the planning commission look at it, then we would need to put it back in the zoning ordinance by reference.
And, yeah, the thing-
I beg your pardon, can I just ask a question? You're saying that the planning commission is not qualified to talk about access and ingress and egress?
I think the planning commission is qualified to do anything they want to do. But I would, if I had to appeal something, I'd rather go to a group of professionals. I was chairman of the planning commission for two years.
I understand that.
And I would not have anything, I, I would not depend on my expertise, which is very little, in the knowledge that these professionals have. And I would certainly like to see it go to them. The planning commission can look at it, but I would, I would like to see this appeals board take the information.
And I do want you to know that your rules are what they're looking at. So the street standards obviously is being upheld by our city engineer.
See, the, the experts are our city staff.
Right.
But definitely, so, but if our rules are not very clear, then that's where we need to start. We need to start with our rules and say, well, no, don't leave any gray area. I mean, the only time you really have appeals is when there is a true gray area and there's an interpretation by the city engineer. If it's a rule, they don't, they don't appeal a rule, a, a specific rule inside the street standards. They appeal the city engineer's interpretation of something that could be gray. So if you're worried about that, we need to tighten up maybe the way it would.
Well, as I say, I'd like to, I'd like to look at it again with, with another option.
I've got Alderman Skinner, then Alderman Ballerhill after that.
First thought is, we, we kind of created this super review thing by bringing all these different expertises in. Could we not just bring the street standards out and establish that it would be just civil engineer, traffic engineer make up for those?
We certainly could.
We could. I think our concern is just how often you're going to have them and how easy it is to keep it populated with those experts. But that is an option.
Can you establish a committee with like three people or five people or something? So then those are-
I have a question. How often does this actually happen?
We've, we've had one on the street standards, one-
In a year.
In the last year and a half or so. And I don't know before that if we've ever had anything.
Can our rule not say that in the event, we, all these other disciplines, we have this set up, that's fine. Can we not say that in the event we have a street standard appeal, we'll form an ad hoc committee of civil engineers who have not already been paid by somebody in the dispute and move on down the road?
The problem is, that takes so long to get that together and-
I, I can file an arbitration proceeding and have an arbitrator selected in two days.
Because they're trained and they're willing to. The problem is, you know, we sent out a request to get people to volunteer and to be on these committees, and it's not as easy as you think to find people willing to sit and, and hear these things. So it, it's time consuming. When we're talking about someone wanting to develop now, and they're wanting to do this thing now, we're trying to work through it. If we don't have a committee, what they'll do is they'll just say, you know, you're not working with us, we're just going to sue on that premise that you're not working with us. You don't have an appeals board set up. And that'll take us at least six months probably to find somebody and get a-
The makeup of this, of our current board, you know, our, the representative that's a traffic or some civil engineer could be opposed to something, and the other people could override what his expertise is. So I'm uncomfortable with this. And again, I really understand, this, this is a much larger consequence. Let's say somebody does approve something that in the end proves detrimental to an intersection that we've just spent $10 million on.
That's right.
That, that is a much heavier consequence than, than if there's a mistake made on how the framing or electrical is, is done in a house. So I, I think because of the, the consequence can be such a, a, a larger amount, maybe this, just establishing this other committee just for the, the street standards that would be composed of traffic civil engineers and, and not these others. I, I think we tried to make it too easy by lumping all these together, and yet you diluted your expertise in that one, that one area.
Well, I don't, I don't think we've made it too easy by lumping it together. And, and listening to what we, what we just listened to, I'll be perfectly candid with you guys, I don't have a problem in the building and street standards board of appeal hearing the appeal process in lieu of the planning commission, having served on the planning commission, as Margaret says, for two years, mine was five. I, I think the planning commission is certainly capable of hearing. I think that probably from a streamlined standpoint, if that's what we're looking for, the building and street standards board of appeals streamlines that hearing process somewhat. When you're looking, because you can call that meeting, when you're going to the planning commission, then the planning commission is looking, they're making a vote and a recommendation. First they'll get a default, because they don't understand. Then they'll come back the next month and they'll understand it. So you're talking about a couple of months at times on some of the appeals process. Listen through those things and listen to them and, and, and know what, pretty well understand what the process is. I certainly don't have a problem in, in the streets, in the street standards, building and street standards board of appeals hearing the appeals process.
Any other comments? All over.
Sean, what's the, the issue with putting it together that would take so long? Because if we, if we would be just finding the people, because it's something that, you know, these people don't have to serve on this every month. It's very, very rare that they'd ever even be called.
Yeah.
So because they're not going to be called very often, I would think that they'd be willing to serve. Is it just finding the expertise of the people who may not be so involved with the city or what?
Well, I think, I wouldn't suggest doing ad hoc. I would, if you're going to do a separate board, I would just do a separate board and have those three or five people already named and ready to go.
Yes.
Because that's, that's the problem, is finding people who want to be on it, serve on it. Because you are making decisions that, you know, are really pretty important.
May not be very popular.
May not be very popular. And, you know, are, are definitely suable, so.
Are these people, are these people required to be from our community?
Well, we can draft it how we want to draft it.
I mean, could they be from Nashville? Could they be from Brettwood? Could they be from-
You can draft it however, yeah.
Lebanon? I mean-
I think all that we have now are all Franklin residents, but we could, county residents.
County resident, county resident.
But they do, most, some of them work in Nashville. They work in Nashville, live here, or they work here and, yeah, they have the-
I think they need some connection.
Why would anybody want to serve on that board if, if the likelihood of the next step is if the developer disagrees, he's going to sue that board then?
Well, that's always, I mean, that's always the final step is, you know, a writ cert.
But they're not getting served the first one.
No, no, they're not, no one's getting served.
So they have no liability there, but I would think that, you know, there'd be enough experts in those fields that we could pull a board together. And some people do like to serve a community, I mean.
And there's no reason that some people who are already on the building and street standards couldn't double sign.
Couldn't do that, couldn't double any on that, yes.
We could certainly look at that.
I understand what Ann's saying here, and I do think that we need to have some experts in that particular area. So however we want to go about doing it, is probably-
What we could look at is our ability to even pull together three or five, whatever that looks like.
Three, yeah, even if she was three.
And see that as an option. And that way you have a, it's more tailored to that now. We may never, rarely use them, but that's the thing. You know, and, and the first line is the really good technical expertise that we have on staff that knows this stuff, lives it, breathes it every day, that we have a lot of confidence in, that are doing it right. But in those cases where somebody questions how something's interpreted, we do need to provide some outlet, so.
But we did have a hearing about, what, six, three, six months ago? And every person on the, on the board was, seemed very knowledgeable. They all had comments and they all had questions. And I don't, I didn't feel like there was anyone that was having a hard time making a decision or keeping up.
The, the other thing that you shouldn't get lost here is that, and we're going to go back and look at it, it's a very good idea to do that, is that these people are, many of them have professional licenses through the state and are, are certified. And having them prepared, which means that they know what the codes, the street standards are, and that's another reason why not to have an ad hoc group, is that you want to make sure that if they're going to serve, that we inform them and provide them with the manuals that they'll actually need to reference if, if something comes up.
Alderman.
Well, my comment is, for clarity, who has the last decision? Who makes the last appeal board is the decision?
Yes, but if a court can make the final decision. If, if a person isn't happy with the outcome at the appeals hearing, they can then take it as a writ cert court.
Last comment.
After hearing this, I think probably the best, the best per, set of people to hear the appeal is probably someone who does have expertise in this particular area, you know? And so I, I like the idea of, of having, and it could be some of the people that are here, but, but at least three people, and somebody was saying maybe five, that, that are expert on, what is it called, street standards there? Because I would suspect that, just as the planning commission doesn't know, notice about, I would think that there are several people on, on this, on our current board that do not know anything about street standards. And so I really, that's, that's the best thing that I heard.
Let us, let us look at that.
I would just like for us to monitor how often, you know, over the next couple of years and see how often we happen to.
They don't expect you to see them. Talking about it tonight than it, than they will on the next night.
But let me tell you, if you make a mistake on this, you are really, really, really hurt and you will hear people complaining to you for years. You probably would not hear that on an appeal from a plumbing, but you, I think on this one you would.
Number nine, consideration proposed ordinance 2011-37 being titled an ordinance to amend tile 1422 of Franklin Municipal Code relative to the applications, permits, inspections and fees for inspection and re-inspections for the planning review process. Who writes these things? Saturday Night Live.
We've got it all, and it's really a very simple concept is that since we are taking two reviews and consolidating them into one, we wanted to save the developers and the design professionals that little bit of money that we're going to be saving and make sure that what we do is compensatory with the amount of time and effort that the staff takes to review that new development plan. And so that we are asking that we drop that fee by about $100. And because even though we're taking two and consolidating into one, the one that we have will be far more detailed and will take a lot of staff time and review, but there will be some savings in time and, and effort.
And again, this, this eliminates around 60 days in the process.
This, the new development plan will eliminate 60 days.
So this is an improvement in that regard as well for everybody involved.
Number 10, consideration proposed ordinance 2011-06 and ordinance to amend section 15405 of the Franklin Municipal Code relative to U-turns.
You may remember a month or so ago, we presented to you some study about the, the municipal code and U-turns. This basically takes the ordinance and amends it as was recommended in that presentation and provides that U-turns are permitted unless otherwise designated and that we would put the authority to make that designation in the hands of the city engineer in terms of looking at intersections and what made sense in terms of safety and, and the ability to, to do that. We would then be required to appropriately sign those intersections areas so that folks know that it's prohibited in that way. Of course, the general prohibition in terms of reckless driving, et cetera, would apply other places that it, people still need to exercise good judgment. But this puts this in place and, and puts us in a better position, more consistent with state law and also more consistent with the practical reality of, you know, good judgment and U-turns being an acceptable thing. Chief?
I couldn't have explained it. But that would bring us in line with both the state of Tennessee and all the other municipalities within the county.
The only thing I would say is, please, it said, you know, there was a little question mark about board of mayor and alderman knowing about this. I think it is important just for public notice, not that everybody would notice that it, that it comes before us, but some of us know that there's some places where we still want to stop whenever there's no longer a stop sign. And so what I'm saying is, you know, if you have done this for years and years and years, you know, just seeing a sign appear suddenly, you might not catch it. I mean, not that, not that those people, but I'm just saying that the public needs to be aware. It shouldn't just jump up there, you know, without any-
Alderman Burger.
I think it's going to be the difference, is right now, there are no signs, hardly ever.
I think what you may see, yes, is people honking their horn behind you, letting you know you can affect it.
Yes, that's right.
But right now, it's, it's prohibited, so there are no signs, there are no signs. So when the signs go up, it's not like we're taking the signs, saying we're going to put them up that says it's prohibited. So they'll get the message there. But the question I had was exactly what Ann pointed out, that question mark, said a BOMA vote required for each posting, which, which would be-
We are not opting for that.
No, no, so, but what I'm asking for there instead is that as a courtesy, I think it would be helpful, I definitely don't want that, but as a courtesy, instead of bringing it before BOMA, it might be good to just send out, just communicate with the ward aldermen and then send it to everybody else as well, the other aldermen. alderman, and then send it to everybody else as well, the other aldermen, and let them know what the list is going to be, of where you've decided to put them. So the board aldermen who are, you know, paying attention to what's going on in their particular wards, we see particular problems, or we say, you have, if you have, if you have that, yeah, if you, if we've noticed particular problems, and we notice it's not on the list, we might want to recommend it, or we, you know, because, in that, that Cool Springs area, I'm thinking Cool Springs area, this is just crazy over there, but I don't want to see a sign up everywhere I go for that, because that's just ludicrous to go ahead and pull, we already have way too many signs in our city. Way too many signs.
There's a song about that.
There's gonna be. But that would just ask that we get the courtesy of the list.
Yeah, I, we'll definitely work on a communication strategy around that to get the word out. And one of the things, too, is this is something we will review on an ongoing basis, because traffic volumes and patterns change over time. And so something that's safe today may not be safe five years from now, so we'll need to continually keep an eye on that, and that's something that's gonna be the responsibility of our police department, our city engineer, our, our folks out on the streets overall that see these things. And we'll just try to keep due diligence on all that, and communicate it going forward.
Alderman Barnhill.
Where are you gonna put the no U-turn signs on Main Street?
Ah, Main Street currently has the double line. Anyone who's doing a U-turn mid-block for a parking spot's already in violation of the state law.
So they're in violation of a double line. So we're not gonna warn them that they can't U-turn on a double line.
You do a U-turn on Main Street, you get what you deserve.
I'll tell you what, I've stopped more than once in the last six weeks, two months, for somebody making a U-turn in the middle of a block on Main Street.
It wasn't me.
It wasn't me, I can't get my truck done that short.
I was gonna say, there's no way you could do it.
Could we at least have a list of them? You're kind of like, you know, our city administrator has authority to do some things, but then you tell us what you've done. So that would, that would be helpful.
I'm gonna go out and find them the hard way.
I get, I get Bill's email, so you don't need to send me one.
All right, moving on. Next, next time we're gonna have a work session start at five. Y'all had too much playtime. Number 11 is a bid award for a tractor-trailer load of rollout refuse containers. Does anyone have any question about that?
It's very silly. Becky, my only question is, are they black, like everything else, everything's gonna stay the same? I know that's silly. Are we getting a discount because they're lime green?
The instructions on the top are also in English and Spanish.
All right, I know that was silly, but I was just like.
My only comment is that they're not the lowest unit bid price.
No, sir. They are the vendor who was closest to the specifications that we published.
Yes. Correct answer.
So the ones that's like Toder, which we have now, didn't match the bid specifications?
They changed the way they manufacture the lids on their containers, so that's the exception they took, and they are the lower, lowest bidder in this case. Yes, sir.
Will these be replacement, or just you will?
These are additional.
Additional.
And, and replacement for folks, or if folks need to buy a second container or what happens.
Is this a great city, or what?
Yeah, I've got one right now. I've got an extra one, and I'm willing to sell mine for $20. I just want to put that out there.
Black market.
You come by and get it.
Make sure they sign up for a second can.
As long as we don't see them at the car sales.
I think it's recorded appropriately on television that she wants it.
So we've got, okay, so we have French, and Chinese, and everything else on this can?
No, ma'am. Spanish and English on there.
I'm just curious.
We might have to get larger cans.
I'm gonna, I know.
Number 12. Number 12.
Wanted to ask Larry Mizell from our Planning and Neighborhood Services, or Planning and Sustainability, sorry, and Todd Snackenberg from our Parks Department, who's our arborist, both have worked with the development of a tree planting plan at the McEwen area, and talk a little bit about that. This is something we're getting ready to move forward with, but wanted to get, have the board be informed of it before we took the next step.
Thank you. Larry, Todd, take it away. It's been two years in getting here. As you remember, two years ago, we began this. We couldn't do it at that time, because it was too expensive, because of the trees and shrubs, and et cetera, and we couldn't afford to put water on it, because there's no water out there on this site. So some people on staff, Lisa researched and found out that we could do it in a different direction. So Todd and us and staff went together, got with T-Dot, and they told us what we could do and what we couldn't do out there. We still don't have any water, but we got, we've devised a way of doing it. Would you run this PowerPoint? Did she get it?
Larry?
Oh, you got copies of it?
We have, we have.
I'll get some.
No, it's not.
Here you go.
No, I don't think any, I get this.
Okay.
It wasn't on mine, thumb drive.
Okay, if you turn maybe to the third sheet, you'll see where the tree planting locations are on there. What we're doing is that we've gone to the Tree Commission, the Tree Commission has agreed to fund this project through the Tree Bank. And what's gonna happen is, is that we can only put trees there, and they have to be understorey trees. They cannot be canopy trees, because T-Dot does not allow the canopy trees, because they could fall in the street and somebody could hit their car. So therefore, they have to be understores, which are the smaller trees. And.
Great, T-Dot.
T-Dot, yes, and so.
Big bulk, T-Dot.
So, and the bid is to bid these out, and to, the bidder who would get it will maintain them for three years. That means he has to water them, he has to take care of them, and everything, so that we can grow them up to a point that then parks or streets can take over and maintain them. We don't have the resources to have water trucks out there all summer long watering these trees and keeping them and moving along. And so that, that's the proposal. Part of our staff will be meeting with T-Dot on Friday to finalize what can do with them. That's the project, and we, you'll see on here that we have 29 trees total, and the species are listed there for you, and there's pictures of them in the back. Todd, you want to add anything to it?
Very excited, yes.
Yeah, just that when we went out on site, we're gonna be very careful about where we're placing the trees, it's not gonna obstruct traffic, we'll be able to.
Or the line of sight.
Yeah, line of sight.
Yeah, and, you know, leaf litter, that was brought up at one point, it's gonna be very minimal, you're talking 29 trees spaced out through a large area, so that won't be a problem.
You'll note, go ahead.
Oh, just, those are the, they're the only issues we could see. We think after three years of maintenance, they'll be established well enough where city staff won't have to spend a lot of time on them, so.
This is not only the islands, quickly, not only the islands out there, but it's the boulevard on either side that goes down on the west side to the red light.
The blue dots, right?
The blue dots.
Yes.
And then the right, the right side goes down towards Carruthers. So we'll be landscaping that whole area through there.
Now Larry and Todd, it's my understanding, while we're still finalizing things with T-Dot, they're in concurrence with where we're going with this. We've worked this through to this point.
Yeah, we actually wanted to do some canopy trees out there, thought that would work, and it would have worked, but they, they want to stick with understorey trees, so we're going with understorey.
So they're pretty much on the same page as us, but before we went further down the road, we wanted to make sure the, the board was informed of it and, and ready to move forward as well.
Now Todd has already, the bid form's ready to go, the gift's okay, the gift's okay. We're ready to bid it, because we want to get it in in this planting season, so that they can begin to grow. So it's, we're trying to push as far as quick as we can.
And this is a Tree Bank funded initiative. The Tree Commission is.
I see the smile on your eyes.
All right, Alderman Skinner. This will, I see the estimate on, on time, three people, 20 hours a year, but if we get in a drought situation, it would be more than that.
Yeah, well, that's actually city staff after the three-year maintenance, so those trees, you know, after three years will probably be pretty well established, be able to, you know, get through a drought. If it gets real bad and we have to put some water on, we, we'll have plenty of staff.
And is this gonna be Streets Department, again, the people that do the rest of our landscaping?
It, it could be Streets or Parks.
After three years, we hadn't decided that.
I was thinking, put the bags on. I, I have one quick question, I know this isn't even on, on this thing, but it's here, and the picture's here, and when everybody look at it, this tree in front of our marker needs to go.
We're gonna remove it.
I think it's planted itself. And the planters that are next to it, I would like for us to seriously take a look at those planters that were put there, to put some, something in them, not green, because nothing will live, they're this shallow, but we might put some kind of structure in them.
Okay, we're gonna resume at 12:00. We're gonna give 10 minutes to time.